Difficult times for everybody and I appreciate everybody understanding and um so what we'll do now instead of waiting until seven o'clock as I asked you to get we will get right into and start the regular board meeting. That okay so um what I will do is because I know that uh what I will do just to make it complete and formal since we adjourned the last meeting I'm now going to take a roll call for the uh actually you know what Mrs. Solis why don't you read the um opening announcement?
Okay as the public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on March twentieth twenty twenty to the Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, Seventy-eight Bear Street, New Brunswick. Mr. General?
Okay, thank you. Um Ms. Ortiz? Mrs. Sodowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mr. Villa?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Morella?
Here.
Dr. Caldwell?
Here.
Mrs. Solis?
Here.
Okay so you have four and you still have on the line Dr. Johnson and all the other members of the cabinet um. So we want to do another front salute? Okay so Mrs. Solis if you wanna you know read the reminder and then go down our orderly normal uh course of business.
Very well. This is a reminder that the regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, April twenty eighth twenty twenty beginning at seven P M at the New Brunswick High School auditorium or by audio phone call. Further instruction will be forthcoming. If I could have a motion to approve the minutes from the February twenty sixth meeting please?
Okay. Ms. Ortiz? Mrs. Sodowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mr. Villa?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis? Mrs. Solis I didn't mean to get on?
Yes, yes I'm sorry.
Okay, motion approved.
Okay so if we could move on to Dr. Johnson's report? Item number four?
Yes uh good evening uh before I begin my report you know in light of the coronavirus outbreak I'm pleased to inform that the district has been successful in implementing our pandemic plan. Um I just wanted to let everyone know that we started prepping in January at latest January and um we are we were ahead of the curve I just wanna personally thank the board uh for giving their leadership and giving us the green light to do whatever we felt necessary to put our plan in place um to ensure that our entire community was safe and to ensure our students will be will continue to to learn and be fed. I personally would like to thank our district leadership team, our district administrators, our school administrators, our district nurses, our security, our teachers, custodians, the buildings and ground personnel and many of our community partners who offered their support. Uh you know to make sure that um our schools were sanitized, um our students and staff were safe and that um district operations were maintained um and
You are muted.
Each and every day we are continuing to feed our students we had about a hundred and fifty volunteers I believe today we fed about sixteen thousand meals approximately sixteen thousand meals and I you know it's just warm to know that the community has come together in light of what we're all dealing with professionally and personally and um New Brunswick is a place that's always that always wants to do what's best for children so I would just like to open that up and thank everyone for their commitment and their support. For the months of February we had eighty-eight suspensions we had three cases of harassment, intimidation and bullying our student enrollment was at ten thousand two hundred and ninety-two our student attendance was at ninety-three point six percent and our certificated staff attendance was at ninety-five percent. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you Dr. Johnson. Do uh we know if Ms. Jaylee Martinez is with us this evening?
We have to make a motion on the per on the Dr. Johnson's report?
Oh.
Now I don't believe she yeah yeah no. Uh you know yeah. Ms. Ortiz made a motion who um
I'm sorry.
Okay and I'm gonna take a roll call. Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Ms. Villa?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis? I might you know what I may have muted Mrs. Shikaitis by accident. Mrs. Shikaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
I don't believe the students represented is with us tonight.
Okay so we will go ahead and move forward with item number six the Facility Committee Report, Mr. Spencer?
Yes Madam President as uh Dr. Johnson just mentioned about the preparation we're doing with the COVID nineteen uh at our facility meeting we were given the procedures for the janitorial and and um facilities. Uh the very deal with seven step program which is gonna be um a tank which is gonna be tracked by all the monitoring by the there'll be a cleaning log uh at each of the areas of the school. Um the Lincoln Elementary School we're gonna put in repairs for the roof I'll report on that at the next meeting and we're exploring in uh in the for the air conditioning with our architect uh D M R. Regarding of Lincoln School Lincoln Addict School currently Devco engineers and architects are preparing a site analyst for one thirty-one and fifty Jersey Avenue. Once that analysis is conduct concluded in approximately three to four weeks the ch- community steering committee and facility committee of Board of Education will make a re- a recommendation to the full Board of Education. That Madam President concludes my report.
Thank you Mr. Spencer. We'll move on with item number seven the Athletic Committee Report, Mrs. Sodowsky?
Thank you Madam President. Uh the athletic um update is at present there are no spring sports and uh the update from March twenty twenty right before the uh big outbreak of this COVID nineteen our New Brunswick Boys Wrestling Team finished at twenty-one thirteen tied for the most teen school wins in history. They also finished ranked number five in the county which is the highest ever. They were also named the New Jersey Urban League Division Champion. First state champion in the history of New Brunswick Girls Wrestling and in the history of New Brunswick Boys Wrestling is a sophomore tenth grader Curly Borbor who won is our first young lady to ever win a state wrestling championship and we congratulate her we're very proud of her. Kishon Davila finished in fourth seeded wrestler in the N J S I A A he's the first state qualifier since nineteen seventy-one. He is the county champion at two hundred and eighty-five pounds first team all G M C. Gariz Albul county champion at a hundred and sixty pounds first team all G M C. Jaden Mahone and Brian Garcia both finished fourth in the county rank rankings and they are third team all G M C. Region Assistant Coach of the Year is Joe Montoro and G M C Assistant Coaches also Joe Montoro and Josh Davis. Our girls had four county champions Joanna Ortiz, Curly Borbor, Donna Walker and Katie Ayella and we congratulate all of them. Um I do need a motion to um accept the bank reconciliation.
So move.
Okay Ms. Ortiz?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Sodowsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Ms. Villa?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Morella?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes. We'll move on to item number three. Thank you. The Curriculum and Policy Committee Report, Mrs. Seawood?
Uh Madam President the Curriculum Committee did meet um March eleventh at that time we reviewed the pandemic crisis preparedness plan and also the continuity of teaching and the learning. Uh Mrs. Scoosa did uh a fantastic job in marshaling all the staff and the entire curriculum and instruction department. They were very well prepared and going forward as Dr. Johnson indicated uh there should not be any difficulty following the plan. All of our students have been uh given Chromebooks and teachers are available for additional for monitoring supervision instruction and as always if there's any difficulty using the equipment our I T program is available and prepared to help. So I must commend the administration their efforts. We were very well ahead when it came to being prepared for online instruction and if anyone any parent grades three through twelve is having difficulty they need to call that school. There is someone available and we are more than willing to help. Assistance is available and uh again we just want to commend our staff and our students who also stepped up. So with that um that's the largest thing we talked about during our meeting. And the work on policies the additional work is on policies is to be continued. That's then my report.
Thank you so much Mrs. Seawood. Item number nine the Educational Services Commission, Dr. Caldwell?
Yes, yes hello everyone um I just wanted to uh as you know the the students we serve at the commission are are the most vulnerable in society and so uh under Mark Finkelstein's leadership they're 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 doing as much as they can to support our special needs students who are on the spectrum autism spectrum multiple disabled and uh dealing with some emotional challenges so this is a difficult time especially for uh for parents um but the commission is really trying to step up to that so uh so thank you that's my report.
Thank you Dr. Johnson I mean I'm sorry thank you Dr. Caldwell. Uh I will like to mention uh from from a parent's perspective of my report um what what I see as a parent uh with three children involved in the district during this this crisis that we're currently experiencing the the preparedness of our district is really just awe inspiring because I've I've talked to other parents uh with with the children in neighboring towns and they are not as well equipped as we've been uh with with this pandemic so I can tell you that my children are logged into the computer by nine A M while their Chromebook stationed by the district. My second year old has been uh scheduled to receive his Chromebook tomorrow. There's been calls from the district uh throughout the week to let us know if if there's a student that's forgotten their charger they can come and pick it up if there's any questions to call the school and I'm I'm kind of reiterating what Mrs. Seawood has already mentioned that was mentioned at the um at the policy and curriculum meeting but as a parent you just have to really appreciate all the work that these teachers are doing and the teachers I can tell you and and attached to the fact that they're having live video chats and Zoom meetings with the students to stay in touch to monitor the assignments on Google Classroom. We have teachers that are grading the work and returning it for correction and I'm I'm really just touched by the ability and and the cooperation that's happened between the the districts and families to get this mission accomplished which is to really have the education continue and I'm I'm just really thankful and appreciative as a parent to see all the work come into fruition and like Mrs. Seawood mentioned not only are the teachers well prepared thanks to our administrative staff but the students are so easily adaptable to these situations and I'm just in awe as a parent to see this working so smoothly and I'm I've I've just I always say I'm so proud to be from New Brunswick but in a situation like this you really have to appreciate the fact that we have been able to provide computers for each and every single child grade now one through twelve and been able to feed so many so even children that they may not go the the meals are still available at the local parks and all the calls that go out repeatedly to parents to remind them and I get them all the time plus the municipal reports I mean it just touches you really deeply and I I get goosebumps just thinking about it because these are resources that other communities don't readily have available and it's just really motivating and and inspiring to know that we come from a community that's filled with so much love and dedication so thank you to everyone that's played such a vital part in completing this and and working so hard day in and day out uh to get this to get this work done we really do appreciate you and so with that being said we will go ahead and move on to public comments. Mr. General if you could start from your list?
Okay thank you um first I'll call for public comment. Mr. Hergen but I'm sorry if I'm saying your name right.
You are unmuted.
Yeah yeah hi thanks Mr. General uh my last name is Pat Booth. Pat Booth. Thank you um I my first my first question has to do with the Lincoln Annex School and
I'm sorry hold on a quick second. Okay go ahead I apologize.
Uh with with respect to the Lincoln School from a facilities perspective uh does the board consider the Lincoln School Annex to be um in any way defective or substandard in its uh current condition?
I will tell you that it is currently working however we know that this is a school that if we would have decided to keep it it would not have lasted much longer without major repair to be repaired.
Do you have a question?
I just wanted to remind the public however that this is a public comment so we will go ahead and listen to your comments this is not questions.
There were questions that people had in the last meeting that we were told to bring to this meeting.
So go ahead this first time if you have another question or comment you ought to go forward with?
Um so I guess I would I would ask uh if if there was an anticipation of an additional expense is that something that the board had actually got estimates on as to what it cost to maintain the school?
So let me let me give let me just uh mute everything for Ben as I'm answering that question so there as we stand with Lincoln Annex here's where we stand. We received a proposal on February tenth that proposal said that they're going to pay for everything the new school and every dollar amount to relocate to the P Tech campus okay? The in what we've now done is we have begun a site analysis there's two sites that were identified now one is one thirty-one Jersey Avenue one is fifty Jersey Avenue. We we have begun Devco is doing the site analysis that site analysis will include all the environmental studies everything about environmentally with the two sites it'll include uh what size school you can uh place on it uh traffic parking that is site analysis would be a full document for to look at both of those sites to see which one best needs the need if any to put a school on so when it comes to Lincoln Annex that's where we stand right now until we get that site analysis there's really not any more questions or anything we can answer other than we're looking at those two sites we're doing a full site analysis on those two sites when we once we get that full site analysis it'll be made available to the public the committees will look at it make a recommendation to the board and then the board will go from there so um I just will say that and then we can move on because there's really not any other questions we can answer at this point in time other than that's where we stand waiting for that site analysis so that we can make an informed decision.
You are unmuted.
So I hope that kind of answers your question on where we are with Lincoln Annex.
Um are you going to count the time you responded to me against my time to speak?
No go ahead you go ahead now that we've done that all anyway if you want to make a public comment about it uh feel free to go ahead and I will set the clock for uh four minutes okay?
Yes thank you.
Thanks.
So given given the uh I've done I've done a little bit of research into the process behind the redevelopment of of New Brunswick and it appears that Devco is moving ahead with a with a process that is not the full redevelopment process but something that's called a re-
Say that again.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So under the New Jersey redevelopment and housing law there are two different processes that Devco could use to to process this project one is called redevelopment and the other is called rehabilitation but one for rehabilitation is a is a
You are muted.
Less burdensome process for them to use and the way that they're using this process for rehabilitation is that the the New Brunswick City Council the New Brunswick City Council had determined that the area around Lincoln Annex School was blighted so the way that the way that we are looking at this now is that this project is being fast tracked using a designation of the neighborhood and the school as being an ablated area which which clearly it is not.
I I wouldn't we wouldn't really be uh able to speak on that or have any details on that.
Okay but you are participating in this project and as such you would essentially be endorsing the city council's determination that this is a blighted area and moving forward with this project under that designation. And that's all I have.
Okay well thank you very much I will definitely for the for the record and you know we're gonna hear a lot of concerns tonight I'm gonna mark all these concerns down so that we continue to look at them as we move forward in this process. Okay so next is um Julie Latance?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay hi uh everyone my name is Julie Latance I'm a PhD candidate at Princeton University in the Department of Mechanical and Aerospace Engineering and I wanted to talk about uh the proposed site for the Lincoln Annex uh proposed redevelopment. Um I am a highly qualified engineer I've designed jet engines subrains helicopters and a host of other devices and in this COVID crisis I've been called on to um build uh invasive uh ventr- ventilators for um a hundred and twenty ICUs um in the area um so please uh take my recommendations with some consideration I say that both the sites at fifty Jersey Ave and at one thirty-one Jersey Ave are highly contaminated toxic sites and I know that people talk about um remediating these sites but I want to tell you a little bit about why this matters particularly because with the contaminants that are present at the one thirty-one Jersey Ave site based on the soil remedie remedial action reports and other um engineering reports that I've looked into um these contaminants present what we call a vapor intrusion risk this is when you have contaminants that are present in the soil that can turn into vapor forms and um enter into the internal space of a potential school um they can enter through cracks in the foundation gaps between the foundation corners and the walls or even through um utility inlet into the building. Um and both the groundwater um and the soil at one thirty-one Jersey Ave are highly contaminated with these contaminants which we call oxido-organic compounds as well as X-box which present the vapor intrusion risk. So what that means is that even if you remediate the site and put a cap on it which is what I do believe Devco will try to do um this vapor intrusion risk will be present for as long as the school is operational and when you build a school on such a site um it's associated with continuous uh maintenance fees for the engineering controls as well as extremely frequent investigations possibly as often and often accordingly. Okay?
Okay I can hear you.
Does that conclude your comment?
Are you there? I think we lost Julie Latance.
I think you muted me hey.
Are you are you?
Yeah I'm there can you hear me?
Okay.
Yeah you you muted me.
Sorry.
That's okay um so the groundwater is contaminated even from an off-site location so it's impossible to say that Devco can remediate the soil on-site it's just you know an off-site groundwater contamination the groundwater contains M T V E's and methylene chloride which are you know you know pose very high vapor intrusion risks as well as lead arsenic and P A Hs and the soil itself um although they have spent a decade remediating
You are muted.
The E B Hs these are contaminated- The EPHs, these are contaminants and things like oil spills. Um, there are still ten contaminants that exist above not only the residential cleanup criteria, but the non-residential drug contact cleanup criteria. So this is even far above, um, industrial standards. And these include things like benzylanthocene, benzopyrene, dibenzylanthocene, all sorts of known carcinogens. Most of the chemicals on this list are known carcinogens as well as arsenic, lead, and so on, which are, um, poisonous. Um, lead in particular diminishes the IQ scores of children. Um, so I want to make you aware of this because even in the event that a presumptive remedial action occurs, this will still pose health risks and financial risks for many years into the future, long after Devco is no longer financially supporting the school district. And as we know, your school district is already deeply in the red. So were you aware of the vapor intrusion risk that was presented by these contaminants at the site?
Um, I'll, I'll repeat my early comment is that we are still waiting for the site analysis on all of that information to make a informed decision. And I, I do, I don't understand the comment. By the way, your five minutes is up and I thank you very much. Um, but I do understand about deeply in the red comment. I've been the business administrator 21 years. We've never been in the red and I don't have a planning of being in the red. That won't happen. Um, okay, we'll move on to that.
Okay, I just, I want you to look out for this vapor intrusion risk in particular, please. Because in Rhode Island and other similar states, this plan would be illegal in the event of a vapor intrusion.
We will definitely look out for that, actually. Thank you. Um, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cradville?
Yes, uh, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Charles Cradville.
You're next.
You are unmuted.
Hi there.
Your name is Cradville?
Yes, Charlie Cradville here. Uh, Madam President, how are you tonight?
Very well, thank you.
Good to hear. I, I wish you and the other members of the board well. Uh, I know it's a really scary time for a lot of people and I think that one good thing we can do is listen to each other. And so I hope that you'll, uh, you know, listen to everyone who, who wishes to speak tonight and that you'll be able to answer questions if people have them. I have just a couple about Resolution M. I'd like to understand how the firm, the law firm was selected, uh, for special counsel services.
Mr. General?
Yeah, I believe that the, um, I wasn't involved in, in that exactly and how that was selected, but I believe Mr. Hendricks, who's the counselor for the board, helped us find some experts in the area that would help assist him in all the work that needs to be done to, um, move through this process.
Right. And so this would be a cost burdened by the district, uh, related to the Lincoln Annex matter. And so I'm going to, you know, respectfully urge the board to put the brakes on this, uh, move and to hold off on approving Resolutions L and M. If they are put to a vote tonight, please vote no, uh, on both of those resolutions. In this time of crisis, it would be best to suspend this proposal. I recall, uh, just six months ago, when I started asking about this, hearing you, Madam President, promise full transparency with the public. And Mr. Hendricks promising, you know, saying that I was way ahead of the game for asking about this and that there would be ample public notice of, uh, you know, votes on this. And of course, at the February meeting, that wasn't the case. There was a, a vote that took place with not even a moment's notice, uh, regarding this matter. And, uh, you know, I would really like to see in this time where the public is unable to, uh, attend your meetings in person and where there's outstanding records requests and outstanding questions and not everyone who's wanted to comment on this has been able to comment on this and not everyone has access to technology, uh, to necessarily participate in tonight's meeting. I think it would be, uh, behoove all of you and I think history would look kindly upon, uh, putting the brakes on this proposal until we as a community can get through this crisis. And, uh, I, I would like to, uh, see that happen tonight. Uh, would that be something that the board would consider, Madam President?
Are, are you asking that we stop our plans until the COVID-19 pandemic is completely over?
Well, at least for tonight, I'm asking you to hold off on approving Resolutions L and M. Would you be willing to, to hold the vote for now?
No, I wouldn't be willing to. The board has already reviewed this agenda, uh, since last Friday. We've had access to this agenda and we've all, um, already agreed to go forward with it.
Okay. Well, there are a number of questions that remain unanswered. I have filed multiple Oprah requests about this matter. And to my knowledge, I've only received two pages, uh, from Mr. Janaron's office. First of all, can, can you ask Mr. Janaron, is he going to be able to respond substantively to my outstanding request tomorrow as he promised?
I don't know if I, the, the first, the answer is no. When I got the additional 30 days for your first request, because you asked me for every email from, you know, 10 months, um, unfortunately, due to COVID-19 and all the staff working on the Chromebook and feeding and lunches, no, I will not be able to, um, fulfill that request tomorrow.
Okay. So, and, and so that means that the public doesn't know when these discussions began necessarily or what the substance of the discussions was between Devco. Can you ask Mr. Ladulce, uh, when did the Board of Ed first begin assisting Devco and, and their subcontractor Lang and Engineering to conduct a site survey? Is it true that was done last summer?
Mr. Cradville, I'll let you know, you have four minutes now. You only really have a minute left. We have a lot of speakers tonight and the public portion will only last an hour. So, um, do you have any other, you know, comments you want to make?
Yeah, that question for Mr. Ladulce. When did the board first begin assisting Devco and their subcontractor Lang and Engineering to conduct a site survey? Surely he would know if they were given access to the site for that. Hello?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think at this point in time, uh, that question really is relevant to anything that we're speaking about. I don't know if Mr. Ladulce, through the board president, um, knows exactly what you mean by site surveys.
Well, a survey. You were, you were, you were talking about 131 and 50 Jersey, saying that you, you need to conduct a survey first. Well, Devco conducted a survey of your property, the Lincoln Annex, and I believe that happened almost a year ago now and it was done secretly. The, uh, mayor and the superintendent have put together this secret committee that are supposedly evaluating what is, what amounts to a false choice between selling the school or giving the school away and taking one contaminated site or another contaminated site. There is, this is not a real choice that the community has been given. The, uh, committee members' names have been kept secret. I've asked the superintendent for this.
So, Mr. Cradville, your five minutes is up. I'd like to let you finish.
Thank, thank you. I'll, I'll-
Five minutes and 14 seconds. Then unfortunately, there's a lot of speakers that want to be secret.
Yeah, I just hope, I just hope somebody asks the question of when the board did that site survey, when the board allowed the site survey. Somebody else can ask it, if not me.
The board and we'll move forward. Um, let me see. How about Ms. Stork? Would you like to?
Yes, I would. Um, I would, uh, yeah. Ooh, a few things here. Um, first of all, as far as the neighborhood, neighborhood of the school is now being a blighted neighborhood or I forgot the technical word for it, um, which it clearly is not. And then comparing that with the school that's supposed to be built, which clearly is a blighted, not even neighborhood. Um, I know you guys get tired of hearing this, but the thought to me that, that that site is part of my neighborhood, like this is supposed to be the attraction of having neighborhood schools, that the school is in your neighborhood. Which, by the way, is not blighted. So, but, but those, those places clearly are blighted and poisonous. And my question, um, would be if the committee is only considering those two sites and both of those two sites, um, prove to be, as in my opinion, they are. We've already heard, we heard our mental engineer that the other one is not much better. Um, what, then what, where does that lead to the plan? And also, I'm curious, who is on this committee?
You are muted.
Because, um, a lot of us that have been working on this issue for a while, we were made fun of. There was, um, uh, derogatory things said to the press about us, you know, trying to be rumor mongers, get people upset and we're in it for our own, uh, personal ambitions, whatever those might be. Um, and, but yet it turns out it was all true. And this has clearly been the plan all along. And so, I mean, we can't help but feel vindication, like, yes, this is in fact what was being planned, all denials for the contrary. Um, I recently found out from someone, a nurse who was applying for a job at Robert Woods, that they were touting their new, uh, cancer center that was going up across the street over two years ago, when she was, was applying for the job. They were using it as a, you know-
Wow.
That you should take the job because, you know, we're going to have this fancy freestanding cancer center right across the street. She was told it's over two- Uh, why do I keep getting told that I'm being muted and unmuted? Can people hear me?
I'm trying to-
Yeah, so you can hear your phone.
I'm trying to stop the background noise from other speakers. And because a lot of folks didn't want to identify, I can't, I don't have everybody's name. And what happens is I can see green coming out of microphone. So I apologize for that. I'm trying to stop the background noise, but, uh, keep going.
Okay. All right.
Can, can you?
You could hear me when I was talking.
Yeah, we could hear you. Can everybody else mute, please? Can everybody else mute? Whoever's not talking. Yeah, everybody else mute. Everybody from the public and everybody, uh, members, everybody mute their phones so that I don't have to mute everybody and then we can hear the person much more clearly. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Stork, continue. You got two minutes left.
Okay. Yes. So, um, as I have said to the city council and the planning board, as a longtime resident of New Brunswick and a homeowner for many years now, I'm wondering what is the overall vision that we're looking at for New Brunswick? Do we not want to attract people who would buy homes for themselves as opposed to rent out and send their kids to our unmuted public schools? But in that case, you know, if I was buying my house now in the sixth floor and I went and looked at it, for my children to go to Lincoln School was attractive to me. But knowing now that at the third grade, they would be going, what you're talking about? Putting the Lincoln Annex? No, there is no way that I would then buy my house knowing that. That's just, I mean, come on. That's just like unacceptable. Um, nobody wants to take a, a, a risk of their child's health being harmed to get an education. Uh, and the thought that we would be willing to trade that off because what? We're making a couple million on the deal? I don't, I don't, I don't see why we feel like we're in the position that we need to, we need to accept something that's so clearly unacceptable. If that, if, if they want that site so bad, they would need to do a lot better than what they've done. And they would also need to look at some alternatives. They really didn't try very hard to do anything else. There are alternatives.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stork. Uh, your five minutes is up and we really appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms., uh, Elizabeth Sacone?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. Um, the floor is yours.
I'm, I'm calling to speak in regards to the Lincoln Annex school, uh, project. Uh, several points that I think are important to be considered and that I hope that the board will consider, uh, before voting to move these plans forward. Um, one thing that's been spoken about recently is that there are 750 or 760 students currently at the Lincoln Annex and that those are the students that will be displaced. And I think that that is a very bad thing, that those 760 students would be displaced. But I think that it's, uh, actually too small, the number to consider because if you take the attitude that the new school that's going to replace this one, it's going to take five, maybe even 10 years to build based on the Red Shaw project, that we're talking about more like 7,500 students. And the fact of the matter is that's practically 10% of the population of the city. So that's one important point I'd like to consider, uh, that this is more than just the current set of students that, that are being impacted. Um, one other thing I'd like to state is that the idea that the location has to be 131 or 50 Jersey Ave to move the school to, well firstly, I don't think the school should be torn down. But even if you choose to tear a, a, a new school down to build a different new school, I'm not sure why we're not looking at the Faren Mall site. When I spoke to the planning board recently about that site in regard to the Lincoln Annex school project, the planning board people basically said, no one bothered to ask us about using that site, so we can't vote on that site. So the convenience of the developers were the reason that the Lincoln Annex, the site was selected. The, uh, nearness of that place to the actual, uh, Robert Wood Johnson Hospital, the Faren Deck location is just as close. Um, and different things can be done with walkways than were proposed for that other site. But you could still have the same level of quality care and nearness to the current facilities simply by moving this project and not using the, uh, the Lincoln Annex school site in the first place. And in regard to the place, the 131 and 50 Jersey Avenue, um, locations, it's pretty clear cut that there are toxic issues with those sites. And I just would suggest to you that it's simply too high risk for children, that no level of remediation will ever be good enough for people to feel secure about their children. And the odds are that those children will get cancer and then have to go to the cancer center that we're building on the school place that they liked in the first place. Furthermore, I think that you're asking people to comment, you're, you're seeking public comment, but you started this meeting 20 minutes early, so, um, I'm sure that some people are missing out because of that. And I'm not sure why this has to be voted on so quickly. Why not focus on the issues of the pandemic, which are very important right now? And table a discussion about this until more people can be involved in the decision-making once the state of emergency has been lifted. Finally, my understanding is that at 50 Jersey Avenue, um, that location is owned by one of the member, the board members of the Robert Wood Johnson Hospital. And it seems to me that that's a certain conflict of interest for, um, selecting that site. But in terms of conflict of interest, no one ever told the public who was on the secret panel that selected that site in the first place. So maybe if we knew who those people were, we'd have a better understanding of why they're selecting toxic sites that have conflict of interest affiliated with them.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Sacone. I appreciate your comments and, uh, we're definitely going to take them into consideration. Um, okay, Ms. Lilia Fernandez?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I'll begin, uh, first by saying that, um, it's very hard to have any confidence in your statement, Mr. Gironi, that you are going to listen to our comments and take them into consideration when at the last four Board of Education meetings that I have attended, I have witnessed nothing but stonewalling, denying, the board members feigning ignorance, mocking and ridic- mocking and ridiculing parents and members of the public, and silencing people. And even now, you started this meeting by saying, by answering Herb's questions and then saying, "Okay, well, I hope that's all there is on the Lincoln Annex School because there's nothing else we have to say about it." Then what's the point of this whole public comment? The board president also said that she has already reviewed the agenda. And so she refuses to consider delaying the vote as Charlie Cladable asked her on the long range facilities, um, plan and in the midst of this pandemic. Then once again, what is the point of this meeting and of this public comment if you really are not taking anything we have to say into consideration?
I would say to you, the purpose is to hear public comments. It's not necessarily a public question and answer period. So it is to take your comments into consideration as we move forward. It is not necessarily set up so that we need to sit down and answer every question that you answer when we don't have the, the answers that you, you may be looking for. So, um, that is the, the, my comment to that.
I understand that, but you all seem to already have your minds made up. You all seem to already be hell bent on the closing and sale of this school. So really, it seems very disingenuous and like, you know, very dishonest to, to, to be taking public comments. Now, I want to point something else out, which is that I keep hearing these contradictions coming from the school board. On the one hand, you told us at the last budget meeting that the state has determined, uh, the district has a $57 million inadequacy. And yet, um, and I think that's what Ms. Julie LaChamp was referring to earlier. Um, and yet I also hear comments from the board president that the district is doing so great and that things are so wonderful. Um, and then I hear that, "Oh, but we have absolutely no money to buy a new school. And so we, uh, to build a new school in the future, and so we absolutely must take this money, this offer that's on the table from RWJ now, or else the world is gonna end." You know, so I don't understand the, you know, these contradictory statements that we keep hearing from the board. I also want to, uh, raise the point. How confident can we be that Devco is going to provide an impartial and unbiased site assessment or site analysis of either 131 Jersey Ave. or 50 Jersey Ave., given that they have a vested interest in this project? And you don't need to answer that. I want to put that on the table. I don't see how we can expect that they will come back with, uh, a, a, a unbiased and impartial, uh, assessment, given that they absolutely want this plan to move forward. They have been working on this for a very long time. Finally, I do have one other thing that I want to raise, is do we even know if RWJ will still be in a position to move forward with this project given this current public health crisis? How do we know that by the summer, when they plan to break ground, they will be ready to do so, uh, i- in the midst of this COVID-19 epidemic? I don't know, I don't hear anything. Hello? I can hear you. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so RWJ has separate funds set aside for this project?
Okay.
So, the, the proposed amount that's been set aside to cover the cost of, of any, of anything that we may incur during the, the inspection of the site and the potential building of, of the school site would not interfere with whatever budget they may have for situations like this? I'm, I'm sure you're aware that, uh, hospitals and all other, um, sorts of, of companies and buildings, they have insurance to cover for emergencies such as these.
Yes, I understand that. Now, how long has the, um, how long has RWJ had these funds in Missouri for this new project? And when was the Board of Education made aware of those funds?
We received the, the official proposal on February 10th. That's when the board became aware of the proposal and the budget that they had set aside, including, uh, the, the fees that they are willing to cover, uh, if we were to accept the proposal, which we already did.
Okay. Now, if you only received the proposal on February 10th, let's assume that that is the case. Why are you trying to ram this through within six weeks, within such short notice, without thoroughly, methodically considering this? Not for years, as Dr. Caldwell suggested to me earlier by email, but at least for a few weeks, a few months, to really consider this in depth? Why did it turn to move on this immediately? I see, I feel honestly like the citizens of New Brunswick are being held at some point. Either sell your school now or, you know, face the consequences.
So, let me, Ms. Fernandez, thank you very much. You're, it's past your, the time, it's almost six minutes. And let me just answer that real quick. The Board of Education is not fast-tracking this. In order to make an educated decision, we need to have a site analysis done on those two sites. Okay? So, there is no fast-tracking. There is the due diligence going on that is necessary to accept this proposal.
Yes. Given this pandemic at this moment, given the pandemic at this moment, when this, these are extraordinary circumstances.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate their extraordinary circumstances. And, um, what we're doing is trying to continue normalcy in our district by moving forward and everybody working remotely and keeping things as normal as we can for our students. So, the next person I'll call, I believe, is, um, Maroon Zayen?
From, uh-
You are unmuted.
... is the, uh-
Maroon, are you on the line?
Yes, hello. Thank you, sir. The floor is- Hi, okay. Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm a, I'm an educator, uh, and I stand every department of New Brunswick. Good, we can hear you. Are you there?
We seem to have lost Maroon. Um, maybe he'll come back on. Uh, now I'm gonna turn the floor over to Juan Gonzalez.
Uh, y- yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez.
Hello, my name is Juan Gonzalez. I'm a New Brunswick resident and a journalism professor at Rutgers. Uh, and, um, I'm here to talk about the Lincoln Annex proposal once again. On March 10th, I sent an open public records request to Mr. Gennaro asking for some simple information. I wanted to know the names of the public members of the long range facilities plan committee that the school district appointed after last month's meeting to help it choose a replacement site for Lincoln Annex. I was especially interested in the parent and community members on that committee, and I asked for copies of any emails from the superintendent that officially appointed those members. The next day, Mr. Gennaro responded to me by email telling me it would take until at least March 25th, coincidentally, that, uh, tomorrow, before he could provide me with a simple list and a few emails. I then wrote to Superintendent Johnson on March 17th, and I CC'd you, President Solis, asking for information on the committee members, specifically their names. But neither you nor Superintendent Johnson responded to my request. You tell me now, here in the meeting, what criteria were used to select the public and the parent members of the committee? What kind of outreach was used to decide on the nine or 10 parent members? And what about the community members? I also would like to know, has the committee, that committee, which you were voting on, I assume their recommendation today for this long range facilities plan? By the way, this, this long range facilities plan of the school district is years overdue. So you had no rush previously to get this plan done. Now you do, right? But I, I wanted to know whether this committee has received any physical presentations or PowerPoints in the, the last couple of weeks? I'd like to know how many meetings did this committee have? And where is deliberations memorialized in minutes? These are all important to determine whether either site is adequate for a new school. Can you answer any of these questions for me? The names of the members? Has the committee met? Has it received any physical presentations? And has it maintained minutes of its meetings?
So, let me, let me first, I know you asked a lot of questions in that, uh, Mr. Gonzalez. Let me first state to you that the reason why I requested seven extra days for your open public records request is anytime anybody asks for emails, that takes an extensive, uh, time for people to look through and find all the emails. Because I want to make sure that it's a search done, it's not done by me saying to somebody, "Oh, send me your emails." We dig into the system to make sure we find any email that's in it. And that takes extra time. You know, obviously now, the, the pandemic has really sidelined all of that, uh, being able to go into the office to get that information.
Mr. Gennaro, with all due respect, all it takes is for you to go to, uh, to the superintendent's emails and do a search term for the, for the long range facilities. It's a, it's a few seconds job, or maybe 10 minutes at the most, to access the computer system.
I know that's your interpretation of what it takes to put all this stuff together, but it's not as simple as that. Um, so-
So can you tell me whether the names of the committee members are secret or not?
No, there is no secret committee. The secret committee hasn't made any recommendations, okay? It was a committee of parents and administrators. The parents were selected by the principal and by the PTA organization. And I will get all that information and everything to you once I'm able to get back into the office. I will be able to have all that information sent to you so you can have all your answers, all your questions answered.
Okay, but the principal has told one parent at least, Maria Juarez, that, that, that the, uh, that it was the superintendent who chose the parent member?
Let me, Rich Man, Rich Man, jump in real quick, just for our- Sure. The PTO president selected the parents of about eight. I have not given the names of the parents, but I guess you will get that through Oprah because I do not want any type of intimidation for the parents.
Intimidation, what about this basic feedback?
Let, let me, let me finish, let me finish. Let me just finish answering your question. And so, this selection of the parents was from the PTO president. That's number one. Number two, I asked the principal to select a couple of, two or three teachers to be on the committee. So you have some teachers on the community. I had selected three, um, community organizations, which is YSS, which is, uh, Jim Jack and his organization, and which is also the Civically. And these organizations-
I had words right here, you-
Let me, let me finish, let me finish. And these organizations are affiliated with Lincoln Annex School. I've also had one board member on the committee as well. Myself, Mr. Gennaro, and Frank Solis. The second question is, there's a, I believe there were two meetings, okay? One meeting, we just went over basic, you know, basic conversation regarding the, the couple sites. And then the second meeting, which I'm sure you're aware of, the committee wanted to recommend to go visit the site and take a physical look at it, which happened, I believe, last week, Thursday or Tuesday, one of those days. So those are the answers to your questions.
And have, are the mi- are the, are the meetings of the committee being memorialized with official minutes or not?
No. No. So you have one minute left, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, and I-
Well, I was gonna say that, uh, uh, the, the issue of how you choose a, a committee of this, like knowing how versatile this issue is, it would have been a good idea to put out a wider net so you might have a diversity of viewpoints, not to choose people that you most, you likely thought were with what you were trying to do.
I disagree with your, with, with that comment. This was not their intent. The intent of the committee was just to continue to move forward, to take a look at the site if we decided to move in this direction.
Okay.
And I think, and I think through your emails and I think through the front public comment, which I do believe are bringing some very important points to be all gathering that information.
Uh, well, thank you very much, and I wish you well in this, in this terrible time of the coronavirus. I hope you all stay healthy and safe. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Appreciate it all. Um, okay, uh, let me see. Did Maroon join back to the phone? No, okay, nevermind. How about David Hughes? David Hughes, are you available?
Yeah, yes, I'm there. Can you hear me, Mr. Gennaro?
Yes, sir. I think we can all hear you.
Okay, lovely. Uh, so my name is David Hughes. I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition of Rutgers Employees. That is 20 unions representing 20,000 workers. Um, with particular attention to the faculty union that I belong to and the health professions and allied employees. Um, I'm speaking educator to educator here for the members of the board. I've taught at Rutgers for 20 years, directed programs and so on. Um, what you're doing to Lincoln Annex is affecting the pipeline of students who I will teach and my colleagues will teach one day. And I'm alarmed at, it seems to be you're going to interrupt that pipeline by sending a few years of kids to an overcrowded windowless warehouse. This doesn't seem to be a responsible thing that educators would do. Um, so that's my comment. Um, I don't think you have the interest of these kids in mind. I think it's have the interest of the financial deal in mind. Uh, my co- questions, though, I do have some questions. Um, I'm interested in the role of Rutgers University. Um, what is the actual role of the university in this? We have not gotten clarity from our own administration, so I'm seeking some clarity from you.
Um, first, if I can just say something, uh, Mr. Hughes. I don't know where you're getting your information, but it is not a windowless warehouse. I'm probably gonna say this, you know, once again, to repeat myself. The school at 40 Van Dyke Avenue was built by the School Construction Authority, right? Under the standard-
Mr. Gennaro, let's not waste time on semantics. I have a question on the floor.
Not semantics. It is not a windowless warehouse that we are sending kids to. It is a school with some of the best windows that you will ever see in some of these classrooms. So I just take, uh, to that, and I'll let you continue with your comments. Thanks.
My question was, what is the role of Rutgers University right now?
I can, I will refer back to my original comments about where we stand in the process. So if you have any other further comments that would you like to make?
Well, my comment is that the Board of Rutgers University, the Board of Governors, is not committed to this project in full. That became clear at the meeting, uh, in February. Um, they are saying that this is a project from being promoted by you and by Devco. So I would suggest that you look very carefully at the Board of Governors and ask them for a written and public commitment to this project. Because if you don't have that commitment from Rutgers, you could be in a situation now where you demolish a functioning, award-winning school, interrupt the pipeline about which, about which I spoke, and you don't have a cancer center to replace it with, and you don't have the money. This whole deal can fall apart because the Rutgers Board of Governors is becoming as embarrassed and ashamed of this old deal as the Rutgers faculty are. So you keep using the phrase "move forward," Mr. Gennaro. I suggest that you not move forward at all until you have a public commitment from Rutgers University for this project. And, and, and my question is, do you have that now?
I will definitely, I'm obviously taking the minutes and taking that under advisement for the due consideration as we move forward.
So, so the answer to my question then, Mr. Gennaro, is no. Is that correct?
I haven't answered your question other than say that we're definitely gonna take that into consideration.
My question is, do you have a written public commitment from Rutgers University to support this project today?
I can tell you that I haven't seen anything at the same time we've seen this proposal, we're looking at sites. It's as simple as, that's where we are...
You don't, basically, you don't have anything. And we, the unions, are going to put so much pressure on Rutgers that you are not gonna get anything from Rutgers. I'm telling you that now. You are gonna be left holding the bag here. And it is just going to be very bad for you and for the city of New Brunswick. And worse than all, it will be a disaster for those kids in that neighborhood around the Lincoln Annex School. Okay, that's all I have to say. I'm very concerned. You are not educated.
Okay, so I have just, I know we're getting a lot of background noise. Um, I believe I have, I'm going to, uh, go, I don't have any other members of the...
Since you are unmuted, press Miss Moore.
Miss Moore, Danielle...
Yes?
Hold on, hold on. I can miss more. Okay, Miss Moore, you go ahead.
Hi, first I would like to... Hello?
I do have, I do have you, hold on a second, Miss Moore. I do have Carlos Castaneda, Andino Osorio, and Carratina Fernandez, right?
Yeah, they're on the line waiting to be called. They, 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 we connected a little later.
Oh, okay. So, um, I have your names on the list. I was gonna go to Dr. Fontanez. Are you guys on the English version or the, the Spanish translation?
Andino and Carratina, I think, on the Spanish one. Um, I'll try to contact later. I mean, I can have them help speak first.
All right, so I'm gonna do Miss Moore, and then I'll go to you, and then we'll go to Dr. Fontanez, who they can talk to Dr. Fontanez, and then she'll translate it to the group here. Okay, go ahead. All right, thank you. Okay, Miss Moore, go ahead.
Well, as a parent, I will say, I will say AA for New Brunswick Forest with the coronavirus, with the calm book, with having, uh, great assignment, being prepared for, uh, school. New Brunswick is listed as some, uh, as one of the best. But getting to Lincoln Annex School, where I am very upset with you, Mr. Johnson, and Vice President, due to where I had evidence to prove to you, you wouldn't even take the time to look at any of my pictures. And wow, you say you care about the students? No, I will tell you one thing. I have been an activist over fifteen years in New Brunswick, and also being a victim of an injury because of New Brunswick. I went at least ninety-eight percent of my cases with making New Brunswick safe, and I know what falls on in New Brunswick and what is unsafe. Where, uh, this location is not safe, due to where, like I told you, French Street has a serious record of so many people getting hit in so many classes. Due to where, and I also proved to you, wanted to prove to you, one thirty-one, DEFCO cannot repair this, and I wanted to show you the pictures. You have five, five major sewer lines that's connected all the way to North Brunswick. They cannot be removed. Due to where, that is the cause, we're also with major flooding there. Every time it rains, the sewage backs up into that. They cannot repair that. And as Mr. Keith Jones told me at the meeting, saying, "Wow, they were gonna repair the streetlights, the saw, uh, the sidewalks, replace everything." Do you have a will stating what they're gonna repair, of everything that they're going to repair? Because what, the city has lied, and Robert Johnson has lied before on record about doing something, and they never did it. Do you have a will, full detail of what they're gonna repair? Hello?
Hello, I'm here.
Do you have a will in writing saying what they're gonna be at cost for to repair, to make sure this a little safer for the kids, to repair Jersey Avenue? Are you gonna kill my concern just not saying anything? So, Miss Moore, since my understanding, there will be no alterations made to Jersey Avenue? But a lot of analysis is the merwean side. That is not what Mr. Keith Jones said. He said, "Due to where they will be repairing sidewalks, due to where you did not have proper curving, you have too many holes in the ground for the kids to be walking through there." All this, you have over twenty streetlights that are un-repaired, due to where it's too dark to walk down that street, street, where, wow, out of any street in New Brunswick, I wouldn't dare walk down that street by myself. And out of, like I said, I've had over two hundred pictures to show you, wow, this is not, no area where a school can go. I'm a person to prove what I point, and that's why I do win ninety-eight percent of my cases against the city and county of helping make New Brunswick safe. You wouldn't even take the time to look at it. It, it, believe me, you're trying to make it like people are evil, going against you, but no, everything was to be done right. The city and the Board of Education wants to notify what was doing properly ordered and stop, stop sneaking going around, this and that. And then what, to find out also what, in order for this project to be done, the owners have to sell their houses over there? So see, until the owners sell their houses over there, the project still can't be done. So you're still going forward too quickly. Due to where they sold every house that has to be sold over there in order for walkers to do this. So like I said, you're moving a little too quickly, and then far as fifty Jersey Avenue, wow, that's still not a good location. You have plenty of sexual harassment involving with older students and other students from that little park over there, where due to where all you have is drunk users, drunkies over there, meaning, would you want your kids to pass through there, what, seeing somebody OD, laying there every, every day?
I think...
I thought you, I thought you ought to be ashamed of yourself, and then the Lord is walking, who being naughty and nice?
Thank you, Miss Moore, appreciate your comments. I'm definitely gonna take them under consideration.
You never did, you didn't look at the evidence, told me.
All right, so we're gonna move on to Mr. Osorio. Are you on the line? Uh, or Carlos, Ken, Tenada?
Yes, hi, uh, my name is Carlos. Um, Mr. Carlos, hi. So I just wanted to have a question. Uh, will the board reconcur that Lincoln Annex will be closed in the fall? That's one question I have.
So... The answer to that is possibly, if the, the sites are selected and the project goes through, then the answer would be yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, my other question is, what is the next step? What is the next step after DEFCO completes its site analysis? After DEFCO completes its site analysis, what is the next step?
I'm sorry, I was just communicating with the Spanish.
The, the committee that's been selected would have to select the site, and then from there, once the site is selected, remediation would have to occur.
Okay, thank you for the answer. And my other question is, when is that committee meeting next? When is the committee meeting next?
I'm not sure when the next meeting date, uh, would you happen to know the next meeting date, Dr. Johnson?
I can answer that question, uh, Mr. Lee.
I was on mute. Okay, go ahead, Rich, I was on mute, I didn't realize.
Yeah, no, the, the, the committee was scheduled to meet the twenty-sixth, but realistically, the committee is going to wait until this, uh, site analysis prepare, so then everyone can get a good look at the site analysis and get all that information and go from there.
Okay. All right, so my, when will the site analysis, when will the site analysis be completed?
We don't know. I would say in the next three to four weeks.
Three to four weeks, okay, thank you. And one of my last questions is, will they submit the contract that DEFCO provides for the, uh, for the public to review it? Will they submit the contract that DEFCO provides for the public to review it? I'm sorry? Yes?
Mr. Hendrick answered, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so, so some of my questions, I just have a comment, and this one goes from Mr. Johnson, this is superintendent. Um, we got ahold of one of the parents, uh, 'cause we kind of, we're friends with, with this, uh, parent. She's a mom by the name of Maria. She, she's been telling us that they only met about two, three times, and yes, there were, there were called about eight parents, but only about three to four parents have showed up so far. And they're supposed to be representing the rest of the parents in Lincoln Annex, but if only three to four parents out of eight parents selected for this committee are only showing up, how is this committee really reflecting the will and the voice of the rest of the parents in Lincoln Annex? And then the other comment is, um, all the parents asked to be part of this committee, and they were told that the committee was already cool, and there was nobody to be allowed in the committee any longer, because there's already enough people. But then we found out that in these meetings, only three to four parents are showing up to this meeting. Why are we not getting more parents involved? They really want, they really wanted to be involved in this committee. That's my question, and I guess that's my last question. Why are we not allowing all the parents, uh, to be part of this committee, because the eight parents that were selected, they're not, all, all of them are not showing up? Only three to four parents have showed up so far in the past two, three meetings that they had, according to this mom, uh, Maria, uh, parent that we have from Lincoln Annex. Thank you. Has somebody answered that question for me? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I'll answer that question for you. I believe, uh, during our last meeting, we had more than three, three to four parents showed up. I believe we had close to seven or six parents to show up. However, uh, the, the PTO president is supposed to be, um, having these conversations during the PTO meeting with all the parents. Um, and he is the gateway to take your suggestions and bring it back to this community. So I encourage all parents to be part of the PTO meeting, and that's, that's the structure that's set up for parents. So the communication is going through, uh, the Board President, who actually, uh, will take your ideas, your feedback, back to the steering committee, so we can make informed decisions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And one last, last question is, what's the name of the president of the PTO? What's the name of the president? Oh, uh, forgot his name.
Arthur, Mr. Statham.
Uh, Statham, yes, there you go, thank you.
Statham, Mr. Statham.
Statham, yeah, yeah. Statham, uh, full name, please? Full name? I don't remember his first name. Okay, so Statham, okay. Thank you very much, that's my...
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so now, I'm going to go to Dr., uh, excuse me, Mr...
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Candido Osorio.
Espero me lo... Hello? Yes, I have Candido Osorio here, who would like to address the board?
Oh, great, thank you, go ahead.
Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Candido Osorio. Soy, um...
Mr. General, can you hear him, um?
Um, yes, I can hear him, yes.
So is, um, Mr. Osorio want to address the board, and he's saying, uh, we didn't mean everybody?
Uh, his father, the name of, uh, the parent, the... Uh, tengo algunas preguntas, voy a empezar con una que es muy importante ahorita mismo por la cuestión que estamos viviendo por el coronavirus.
Okay, he has a, he has a few questions, and one of the questions is related to COVID-19.
Okay.
Uh, yo entiendo que el sistema escolar no ha reparado, eh, para el virus, eh, no ha sido...
So, um, he, he understands that the schools were not prepared for the, um, to face this crisis, and that they have received a letter from, um, the district.
Okay.
Eh, que el aviso fue que si los niños no entraban, no entregaban sus tareas, eh, te les iba a cortar contar como falta en, en sus días de clase.
So the announcement states, stated that if the students didn't complete their homework, they were going to be considered absent.
Eh, la cuestión es que hemos estado hablando, yo lo personal, con algunos padres, eh, y muchos de estos padres han tenido problemas. Una, porque no todos tenían computadora, no, no sé si ya entregaron a la escuela, se entregó computadoras a todos los niños, porque hasta donde yo entendí al día de ayer, muchos niños no tenían computadora.
So the main problem was that several parents had stated that, uh, many of the children did not have computers, and also yesterday, they were still distributing some, uh, computers for the students.
Algunos, eh, aparte de, los que tenían computadora, no tenían el servicio de, el servicio de internet, y algunos que tenían el servicio de internet, los códigos no se le estaban aceptando en el sistema de los programas que ellos tenían.
And the problem was that some of the students did not have internet, and those students who had internet, the codes, uh, that they, they had were not being accepted, uh, when they had to log in into the program.
Si yo quisiera que los de la junta directiva reconsideraran esta, esta forma de actuar, ya que entiendo que todos estamos pasando por tiempos difíciles, tanto como ellos que son de la junta directiva, como los padres y como los niños, porque creo yo que ni ellos como maestros, ni los estudi- ni los estudiantes, creo yo que estaban preparados realmente para esto.
And he would like to, um, ask the board to reconsider this system, and he understands that everybody's going through difficult times, uh, not only parents, and, and the board, and students, and teachers, but he feels that, uh, not everybody was prepared for this crisis.
La otra pregunta es acerca de...
The other question...
La investigación que está haciendo DEFCO acerca de los lugares contaminados.
The other question has to do with DEFCO and those places that are deemed contaminated.
Eh, eh, no sé quién dijo de la junta que de eso se llevaría tres a cuatro semanas para DEFCO entregar, eh, los exámenes o las muestras de qué daño, qué contaminación tiene en esas propiedades.
And he wants to know if it's going to take about three to four weeks to get the analysis, uh, back.
Eh, y mi pregunta es, eh, tengo entendido que hoy piensan pasar resoluciones para que el proceso de la venta de Lincoln Annex siga avanzando. Creo yo que es irresponsable a tomar esas decisiones sin antes tener esas pruebas, que las vean ellos antes de tomar una decisión así.
And, uh, and it is his understanding that tonight, a resolution to approve, uh, the death penalty for Lincoln Annex is going to take place, and he wants to say that he feels that it is responsible to approve such a... to approve such a sale before having any, uh, proof or any other site where Lincoln Annex can be built.
Como el profesor Juan dijo, que tenemos la documentación acerca del estado donde marca cuánta contaminación hay, eh, principalmente, eh, la uno treinta y uno de la Jersey Avenue.
And as, uh, the professor said or mentioned that there is some documentation from the state, uh, that is stating, uh, what is the level of contamination for one thirty-one Jersey Avenue.
Y quiero pasar, si en estas dos carpetas que hay contaminantes, contaminantes, no se puede construir una escuela, y si ya, ya vendieron la escuela, ¿qué va, qué realmente van a hacer? Cuando ellos siempre dicen, la junta directiva siempre dice, que están poniendo primero la educación de nuestros hijos.
And what is going to happen if these two sites are deemed to be contaminated? What is the decision, uh, that the Board of Education is going to take? Because they are always saying that they are taking, uh, the needs of our students, or putting our students hurt. Okay, so...
Yo les pido, por favor, que recoïtidean las decisiones.
So he's asking the board to reconsider his decision.
I would just like to, uh...
Desde el momento que siempre dijeron que iba a haber transparencia.
If I can, if I can, thank you. Really quickly, uh, Dr. Fontanez, I think it's, for, for any challenge I'm posting in... I just want to address the, the caller's, uh, first comment, which suggested that students, um, not be marked absent if they are unable to complete the work. I do just want to remind everyone that just like our schoolteachers are being held accountable during this time, and although, uh, we are unable to be physically present in our school buildings, active learning and participation is accepted not just from our teachers, but also from our students. And we do have the resources available. Students, some students have forgotten their devices in the building. Uh, calls were made from each school to remind students that they will be able to go and pick up, um, their devices or chargers if they were forgotten in the building. Um, and those are calls that go out to let you know what time, uh, what's the designated time to pick up these devices. So, um, no, that cannot be reconsidered, and students are still expected to participate actively, uh, in their, in their educational process. And parents are encouraged to follow up with, with the schoolteachers to ensure that the education is still occurring. Uh, if you are having issues with the internet, um, just make sure you communicate that concern to the schoolteacher. Um, and as far as internet access, there have been multiple resources given as far as, um, as far as I know as a parent for that school as well, that let you, um, access free internet access for up to thirty days. And so really, I just feel that there's no excuse for students to not be completing assignments during this time. We need to remind our, our children that this is not a vacation. This is not a time to just hang out. This is a time that we need to be actively being educated, even though we're not in the vis, in, in the buildings physically. And then, um, for the other point, once we find out, uh, the reports about the prospective site, we would plan on moving forward depending on what the committee, um, accepts. We, we expect them both to be contaminated, but then again, remediation would occur at either site, whichever one is selected. And I don't know how much time you've used up, Mr. General.
Uh, it, 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 him, his comments are over, so, um, we thank you very much.
Do you expect them to be contaminated?
I'm sorry, is there Cantina Hernandez available? Is she on your phone, Dr. Fontanez, do you know?
Carratina? Carratina?
Is she on her way to the phone? Okay, well, we, we have, um, heard from everybody, and we're, we've been well past that hour for the public portion, so I will now close down the public portion of the meeting. We thank everybody for your comments. And I'm sure we will be, um, addressing them at a further time. Um, at this point in time, I will then move on to...
It was item number twelve, and we need a motion to accept the consent agenda items.
Vote no, L and M.
Okay.
Vote no.
Okay, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes. Yes, abstaining on L and M?
Mrs. Shikina?
Yes, I also abstained on L and M.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Mr. Swallow?
Yes.
Mrs. Sollee?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, item number thirteen, the finance committee report. Dr. Caldwell? Isn't that typically, uh, Mrs. Sedowski?
No.
No, not Dr. Caldwell, it's the chairperson. And what everyone has in front of them on the website is transfers and the, um, bills that, for the payment of bills.
Right, yeah. I'm sorry, I can't, hard to hear, hard to hear, so... Yeah, everybody, uh, is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second. Second.
Okay, so roll call, Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Varela?
Yes.
Yes, I stand on page seventeen.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes, I've stand on page five and fifteen.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so I do this one right now. So I'm gonna call, what do I think about this?
Okay.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. General. And so, uh, seeing that we're now on to item number fourteen, I know that we have no, uh, closed session since we've all been afforded the opportunity to already review the personnel report. Um, and so if I may, just go ahead and read the resolution... I'm sorry, not the resolution for closed session, but, um, item number fifteen, the personnel committee report. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes, uh, as you said, um, all board members received, uh, the personnel report, the reason now. Uh, me being the chairperson, I received no of any changes as far, so I make a motion that we accept personnel report with amendments.
Second.
Uh, amended, amended, I'm sorry.
I second it.
Okay, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Varela?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikina?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela? Oh, great, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Varela.
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sollee?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you so much. And so now, if we could have, uh, re, uh, and a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No. Second.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Is there any opposed?
No.
Seeing that nobody is opposed, the meeting is adjourned. Um, we thank everybody for participating.
Great job, Mr. General, very good.
Yeah, great job, Richard.
Very difficult, but very good.
Everybody has a safe night and stay home.
God bless, be well.
Bless your hands. Goodnight, everyone. Good night, General. Think about what we have done.
Goodnight, everybody.
Hey, Richard?
Goodbye.